I'll get these set up real quick. Make sure they're ready. She knew I wanted red.
How you doing, sir?
All right, what we got here? You are restarting this computer while there are other users still using it.
I would say yes on that one.
This is pretty old. All right. Is he here?
Yep.
Oh, there he is. I see him.
Actually, he's not here.
Red row!
He's not here.
All right.
He's not going to be here.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Come up out of that. That's why we started. We're supposed to just come right in. But we'll see. I'm not used to having to sign any of these things. I mean...
Okay, hello, 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 hello. Hello. All right, if we can get some of the assistant superintendents to sit down and stuff. Not that I'm not calling anybody any names, but anyway, welcome. And it's so good to have a good crowd and see everybody visiting before we get started tonight. Before we start our meeting this evening, your participation is certainly voluntary. We will have Dr. Rollins open with an invocation and then the pledge, and then we'll call our meeting to order after that. So, Dr. Rollins?
Welcome. Let's pray together. Dear God, we thank you for the abundant blessings you provide for each of us. We thank you for the children of this school district and for the privilege that you've given each of us to serve them, to support them, to encourage them, to challenge them, to learn at their highest levels. We ask that you guide each of us as their teachers so that we might give our best so that they can become their best. Help us to realize that each student is so important and that each student has great potential and promise and that we, together, our teachers and parents and our administrators, can help each child realize their greatness if we do our work well. We thank you for our great teachers and principals and support personnel, and we understand that it takes each of us working together to meet the educational needs of all of our children. We ask, dear God, that you continue to bless this work. Amen.
All right, I'm going to ask Zach Burton to come lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Zach. All right, well, at this point, I would like to go ahead and call our October Board meeting to order. And Board, you have had the agenda for a few days. And Dr. Rollins, I think you may have had a modification or two to the agenda that you wanted to present to us before we approve that.
Mr. Luttrell, on the second page of the agenda, item E, I'd like to wait till November to have that presentation. The student that we wanted to recognize is actually traveling as a part of this event that she's being recognized for. So, we'll do that in November. And then, if I could look down to the presentation by the Department of Instruction at the bottom of the page, item A, after the wording as it exists now, if we would add a discussion of the annual report to the public. That's been completed since the agenda went out on Thursday, and we'd like to share that with the Board. I believe with those changes, Mr. Luttrell, the agenda would stand as presented.
Okay, Board, well, we have two adjustments to the agenda. With that being the case, do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Slut.
All right, motion by Mr. Hutchinson?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cook. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There's none, so the motion carries. Several of our Board members are traveling tonight, so a little bit smaller crowd up front, but they certainly send their greetings and are sorry they can't be here tonight. And moving on to our minutes from the previous meeting of September the 9th, Board, you've also had those for a few days, and I will accept a motion to accept those minutes.
Slut.
Motion by Mr. Hutchinson?
Second.
Second by Ms. McFetridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There is none. Okay. All right, this is the part of our meeting where we do open the floor up for patron comments. And really, what we do ask is that you just come forward and identify yourself and your address so that we know your name and where you are from. We ask you to keep your comments brief. We can't take action on your comments this evening, but we would certainly take them under advisement for a later date. So, is there any members of the audience that would like to come address the Board? Okay, well, there is none. Okay, Dr. Rollins, we'll move forward with our agenda then.
It's a pleasure for me to invite Zach Burton, our representative, student representative from Springdale High School, to come back to the podium. And let me recognize him, and I know he'll have comments for the Board. Zach, we're very glad to have you. Board, if you'd turn to page 15 in the agenda, you see a summary of how involved this young man is in school. I enjoyed visiting with him earlier. I don't think he's missed many opportunities. Zach, we're very proud of you, for sure. Zach is a senior this year. His parents are Roy and Nora Burton, and they are with us. And we're very glad to have each of you this evening. Zach is president of the Springdale High School Student Body. He's a member of the Service Learning Class. He's a member of the Future Business Leaders of America. He's a member of the National Honor Society. He's a member of the Key Club. He's a member of the Springdale High School Football, Basketball, and Track Teams. By the time he graduates, he will have taken six Advanced Placement classes at Springdale High School. So, you can see he's very active in his school. He's also active in his community. He's a musician at his church. He volunteers at nursing homes, volunteers at Kiwanis-sponsored sporting events, and participates in the Relay for Life and the Race for the Cure. Zach, we're very glad to have you here this evening.
Well, first and foremost, I want to thank you and Mr. Jinks, my principal and the school board, for the opportunity to come and speak in front of you all today. And like you said, my parents are here, so I just wanted to thank you guys for coming and supporting me along this long journey. And just to echo on a little bit of what you said, I am involved in numerous activities at Springdale High. My schedule this year, I'm currently taking fundamentals of TV to kind of go along with my major of Mass Communications and Sports Journalism, AP Literature, of course, Surface Learning, and I'm taking College Algebra and College Finite to go ahead and get college credit right now. As far as what I do in the community, I am a junior Rotarian for Springdale High in the month of October this year. So, it's good to get into the community and kind of see what's going on outside of the school and just really get involved young. So, you never know when you may come back and have connections and how that works. My church, usually every fifth Sunday, we try to go to their nursing homes, and we will sing and encourage them and just uplift their day a little bit. And so, I consider that a great thing to go and do for them as far as community service goes. And being an athlete myself, I do like to work with the kids. So, when I'm not working in the reading programs and with them, I do like to go to the Kiwanis Kids' Sports Sporting Events and I've worked the Junior Olympics. And when it comes to Springdale High, to the football field, they just go crazy, and they really love it. So, it's just good. I feed off of their energy, and it's just something really fun to get involved in, really easy, too. As far as my hobbies go, when I do have time, when I'm not playing sports, I love listening to music. As you said prior, I'm the church musician, so I play the pianos and the organs, and I help lead praise and worship service when I can. And of course, when I do have time, I spend time with friends, and I am an average teenager, so I like to play video games, too. I've had several positive experiences at Springdale High School. I like to divide them up into sports academics and then just traditional Springdale. As far as sports, last year, I was a member of the Springdale High School Basketball Team that got to go to the state championship game. We finished as runner-ups. And that was just a, it was a special moment to be on that team and to get to come back and try to do it again this year. It's a great honor. Also, I just get to play in a great atmosphere at Springdale High School Football Games. There's really nothing like it, you know, whether on your Harbor or Springdale. It's just a great community to see them all come together. It's really special. And just getting to meet and learn from all of my coaches, they all come from different backgrounds, and they all come from different situations. You can always apply what they tell you to your life, and they're always open. And it's just a real family at Springdale. And I think that's one thing that we've always pushed is that we're classy, but we're one Red Dog family, and I really take pride in that. I, being Student Council President, I get to help lead pep rallies, so I'm not always as formal as I may look right now. So, just getting to play a part and help keeping the school spirit up. Just to mention, this week is Spirit Week at our school, so we all get to dress up in great costumes, school-appropriate and everything. But we just get to dress up, and everybody comes together, of course, for the homecoming game Friday. And so, just that great tradition of a homecoming assembly, you know, for all these years, and to be a part of that is a great honor. And of course, one thing we always do is sing the alma mater. And even if you don't know the words, they are on the gym. So, you get to look at them, but it just keeps going back to they've been there all these years, and they're still never fading, and the history is still there. You know, the pride is still there, the spirit is still there. It's a great atmosphere. In the classroom, I can honestly say I've never really had a problem at Springdale High School with a teacher personally. You know, everyone that I've had has tried to make themselves available after, before school, work around my schedule, and try to help set me up for success. And one thing I do believe in is if you're willing to put in all the work, you know, then I'm sure the teacher will be able to work with you. And they've been able to do that for me. And they truly prepare me for success in college. One thing I'm looking forward to, I've applied to several schools. I don't know if that's good or bad, that I haven't narrowed my decision down yet, but I've applied to Baylor University, Ohio State University. I've actually been accepted to the University of Arkansas and Oklahoma State University and Missouri State University. So, I may apply to a few more, who knows? But as long as I get them by that November 1st deadline, I should be okay. As far as plans after high school, like I said, I want to major in sports broadcasting and journalism and mass communications and pursue careers in sports commentator. It's something I've always loved, and you know, even, you know, every kid has that dream of playing professional sports and everything. But I've learned there is a real world inside of that. And so, just to be around that atmosphere of sports and get to do something that you love to do and speaking in front of great crowds of people like tonight, it'd be a fun, I would say, not easy, but you know, not as hard as construction work or something like that. It's something I really love to go out and do, meet new people, you know, just great experiences. Also, if available, I could get a master's degree in Other Media Studies. And if I wanted to keep going to school, I would try to get a professional degree and maybe physical therapy and work with athletes and try to get them back on track because I know I've been through my share of injuries myself. I'd like to attend a college that is large-scale and maybe even out of state just to, again, experience and meet new people and just get out and really see the country and see the world because you never know what's out there until you truly get out there. And if the opportunity to play college football presents itself, that is something I would love to do. So, that is a little bit about me. So, if you all have any questions, feel free to ask.
I promised him very difficult questions, so I don't know which one I'm going to ask to go first.
So, if I get to come to the pep rally on Friday, what am I going to see you do?
Well, to give you, well, we had a pep rally for the Harbor game, and one thing we did was a neat trick with the student section. So, prior to the pep rally, I was hidden behind the student section for about 15, 20 minutes. And whenever we started, we had the other vice president of Student Council who helps me during pep rallies, he was Moses parting the Red Sea. And so, he had this large rod and planted it to the student section. They all just peeled to the side, and I just arose out of nowhere. So, it gets pretty fun. It's just a crazy atmosphere. I'll jump around, you know, I'll talk and yell in the mic. But one thing I will do, I'll encourage whatever team, you know, not just the football team, but we try to incorporate all the fall sports and then winter and spring as they come into the pep rally, so no one gets left out. So, it's a great experience.
Other questions?
Well, I don't have a question. I'm just going to make a couple of comments about Zach. I've watched him for the last, I don't know, five or six years through junior high and high school, and I've been very impressed. And he's right, you never know what he's going to do at a pep rally. I've been to all of them. And he does a great job with that. He's always been in leadership roles. And I've been really impressed, and I've enjoyed watching you mature and become a leader, and people look up to you, and you put a good example out there. So, I applaud you for that.
Well, we've got some students in the audience tonight. What would you tell them about being as involved as you are in high school, you're successful, and you know, just what motivates you?
Well, first and foremost, don't ever limit yourself, you know, because you may think it may be too hard or too much because there's always help that is there if you need it. One thing that's really motivated me is just, I believe, I had an experience when I was pretty young, and there was a teacher who tried to tell me that, you know, it's going to be hard to do this when you get to high school, being involved, the classes get harder, the sports get harder. But I talked to a few other teachers, and they said, "You can do it." You know, "If you really want to do it, you can put your mind to it and do it." And really, I'm not going to sit here and front. It's gotten hard sometimes, and it will get hard. But I've really, I have a strong relationship with God. And one thing for me is just that he just takes the load off of my shoulders sometimes and just really gives me the energy and the strength that I need to keep going on. So, really, just don't give up. And you know, a scripture I turn to is Philippians 4:13. It says, "I can do all things through Christ which strengthens me." And I think that's one thing that they could take to their personal lives since if they do have that relationship. And if not, you know, always know that there are resources available to you if you need them and that the sky is always the limit. So, just don't let anyone tell you that you can't. Just keep pushing.
Thank you.
I don't think I can ask another question after that. That was terrific, great motto. Well, thanks for being in Springdale, and congratulations to you and your parents. Zach, I take that back. Which schools did you attend before Springdale High School? What other schools in Springdale have you been to?
I went to J.O. Kelly Middle School, George Junior High School, and then Springdale High.
And then Springdale High, great, okay. Well, that's good. I know they were very instrumental at those schools before you came to Springdale High, so... I know Ms. Ford's not here tonight, but she'd be running around and...
She'd let us know if she was here.
Yeah, well, that's great. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Rollins?
One of the really special moments of the school year is to recognize our Teacher of the Year nominees from each of our buildings. I want to ask Dr. Moore to come forward and introduce each of our nominees. We're very proud teachers of each of you.
I am very proud to introduce these folks to you. Some of them you already know. You've met them out in the schools. But what I'd like to do is, teachers, when I call your name, if you would come forward, and we're going to make a couple of lines up here. And if you have family with you or other members of your staff, if y'all will just rise when their name is called so we can acknowledge the support that our teachers give. You could do that. Thank you. We're going to start with our Early Childhood Center, and Madely Wilburn. Now, I believe Ms. McFetridge has a gift for you. Ms. Wilburn serves on the instructional leadership team at the Early Childhood Center and has traveled and served children from Ecuador, Nicaragua, the Dominican Republic, and Mexico. And she's also served children from Korea and Japan while she was working in Hawaii. So, she has a very broad and diverse background. Thank you. Now, we're going to start out on the Far East, okay? Monitor Elementary. Now, I believe Ms. Cook, you have a gift for Cassie Cottzer. We've already met Cassie. Cassie teaches 5th graders about math and science. And if you may remember, we met her at a board meeting not too long ago when she was recognized for her National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, or NOAA, as a teacher at sea. She's also a graduate of the National Educator at Space Academy in Florida. Is that correct?
Huntsville.
Huntsville, Huntsville, Alabama. All right, thank you. This is Cassie Cottzer. Parsons Hills, we have Allison Ward Seidel. Allison teaches 4th graders at Parsons Hills. She writes that her goal is to educate all young people to make strong and sustaining decisions intellectually, emotionally, physically, and socially for a healthy future in society. Thank you, Allison. And from Turnbow Elementary, I believe Mr. Hutchinson has something for you. Whitney Shattuck. Ms. Shattuck is a nationally board-certified teacher who serves 1st graders at Turnbow, and she writes that she believes in accepting nothing but the best from her students. She works with our district curriculum writers in the area of mathematics and has helped us produce curriculum that is currently being taught in all of our 1st grade classrooms. Thank you, Whitney. Our candidate from George Elementary can't be with us tonight, but that is Jessie Walls, and Ms. Walls teaches 2nd graders. Her philosophy is centered on three areas: the environment that is conducive to learning, relationships with adults and the other students in the classroom, and struggles. The children have to struggle to gain the learning together as they succeed and laugh and learn. So, that was Jessie Walls. Our next candidate is from Harp Elementary, Ms. Kim Green. Ms. Green teaches 3rd graders at Harp. In her philosophy, she states that Abraham Lincoln had a personal commitment to democracy, Thomas Edison to technological advancement, and Harriet Tubman to freedom. My personal commitment is to the success of my students. Thank you, Kim. At Jones Elementary, don't sit down, Mr. Luttrell.
Yes, ma'am.
From Jones Elementary, we have Anna Dellinger. Ms. Dellinger teaches 5th graders. She mentors MAT interns from the U of A, and she has presented at a couple of conferences already. She's presented to the Arkansas Teachers of English as a Second or Other Language about close analytical reading, and she has presented at the Annual Arkansas Reading Association Conference Regarding Digital Learning Language Experience Approach. Thank you, Ms. Dellinger. Our next candidate was from Lee Elementary, Ms. Tiffany McLaughlin. Ms. McLaughlin is an instructional facilitator who believes that each child is a unique individual who needs a caring, safe, engaging, and supportive classroom environment in which to grow, mature, and reach his or her fullest potential. Potential, excuse me. Thank you, Tiffany. From Bayori Elementary, we have Amy Reniker Johnson. Ms. Johnson teaches 4th graders. And she writes, "Teaching has been my dream since I was in elementary school at Westwood Elementary. I was fortunate enough to have teachers who believed in teaching children to be independent problem solvers. They instilled in me the same belief which I, in turn, have tried to instill in my students." Thank you, Amy. From John Tyson Elementary, we have Linda Skelton. Ms. Skelton teaches children in grades 1 through 5 about art, and she serves as our district elementary art coordinator. In her philosophy, she states, "I have the best job in the whole world. I go to work to inspire students to sharpen their minds and to gain confidence in their abilities. I believe that if you have the passion for what you do, it becomes contagious." Thank you, Linda. From Walker Elementary, we have Jean Duncan. Ms. Duncan teaches 4th graders, and she writes, "Teaching offers many rewards. One of these is seeing the faces of the students line up after mastering a difficult concept. Additionally, watching students work productively in pairs and groups. And through this, you can see the celebration of achievements which enhance confidence in their abilities while strengthening the community of our classroom." Thank you, Jean. Our candidate from Westwood cannot be here tonight, and that's Carrie Kenny. Excuse me, Carrie Kenny. Ms. Kenny teaches children at Westwood in the East Program. In fact, that's where she is tonight. It's East Night Out at Westwood, and she's working with children and parents there tonight. And she writes that she has grown in her teaching career and that she has become a facilitator of learning who guides her students to a deeper understanding of their learning in a conceptual and integrative way. From Elmdale Elementary, we have Sarah Schreiber. Ms. Schreiber teaches kindergarteners. She has applied for and received grants to support the children in her classroom, and she says that the purpose of learning is to open the eyes of students in order to help them discover who they are and where they want to go in life. Thank you, Sarah. From JV Hunt Elementary, we have Amber Jones. Okay, okay, Ms. Jones is not able to be with us tonight, but she is a nationally board-certified teacher who teaches children in grades K through 5 about music. In her philosophy, she writes that she believes in her students in developing 21st century skills and the educational immersion of the whole child, in partnerships, in our educators, and in sharing what works with others. From Willis Shaw Elementary, we have Julie Hudgens. Ms. Hudgens teaches 2nd graders at Shaw, and she writes, "Teaching is by far the best profession out there. At the end of each day, I remind myself of the difference I am making in my students' lives and the impact they are having on mine. They make me see the world through a completely different lens that I would not have had if I had not become a teacher." From TG Smith Elementary, we have Ashley Kirby. Ashley teaches 3rd graders. She is vice president of the Northwest Arkansas Reading Council and is pursuing national board certification in literacy. And she writes that her biggest reward in teaching is seeing the excitement on her students' faces when they have grasped a new concept. She strives to give them the tools that they need to nurture their areas of weakness and help them excel in their strengths. Thank you, Ashley. From Burnish Young Elementary, we have Michelle Donnell. Ms. Donnell serves children with disabilities in the areas of speech and language in grades K through 5. She writes, "My job as a teacher is to get to know each child, learn about his or her life, and develop a relationship of trust and respect so that each one is eager to learn. Confidence is the key to success in life, and a teacher is one of the most important people in a child's life." Thank you, Michelle. And our last teacher is also our Springdale Teacher of the Year. You've met him before, from Sonora Elementary, Josh Worthy. We introduced Josh to you several months ago, and you've seen the work that he and his East students have done. He and his students have gained national recognition as the first Elementary East Program in the country to win the coveted Founder's Award at the East Conference. They have also presented to the Esri Trade Conference to a room full of hundreds of people in the global information systems industry. Mr. Worthy writes, "I personally believe that the most important aspect of teaching is making sure that we grow our students. I feel that students should and will take responsibility for their own learning when given the opportunity." Mr. Worthy lives that philosophy daily as seen through the accomplishments of his students. Thank you, Mr. Worthy. I do want to give my special thank you to all of you. I've been in your classrooms, and what you do is nothing short of a miracle. So, thank you. I appreciate all the work that you do in the daily classes. Thank you. you do in the daily classes. Thank you.
I want to, just from the board's perspective, thank each of you, congratulate each of you. We've been to your schools. We've seen your work because your principals are always kind enough to bring you to us so we can see your work and your students and their achievement. It is a great job you do and a noble job. I mean, look, everybody just loves to teach you. So I just want to say thank you and congratulations. You're all deserving of this, I know. So way to go.
Dr. Morley, I believe you have a second. Very special recognition.
I do. I do. Back on September 19th, one of our schools was recognized by the Department of Agriculture as winning the Arkansas Garden of the Year. So it was a very, very special recognition ceremony. And at this time, I would like to call up our assistant principal, Mr. Wayne Bowlen. Ms. Allison Strange, our principal, has had surgery recently on her knee, and so she said, "I think I'm going to go home and prop it up." So Mr. Bowlen is here with us tonight. Mr. Bowlen, would you like to come forward and introduce your teachers who are going to show up tonight?
Good evening, board. It's great to be with you. Ms. Strange sends her regrets for not being able to be here. We're certainly honored and excited to receive the designation of School Garden of the Year, and I wanted to bring a couple of folks with me this evening that were instrumental in getting this off the ground and going, and let you hear from them this evening. This is C.T. Erickson, 5th grade teacher for Westwood Harp, and Destiny Slinker, Food Corps representative.
Good evening. Someone once said, "A society grows great when old men plant trees whose shade they know they shall never sit in." As teachers, we are constantly looking for those trees. The learning experiences we know from the beginning, we will never fully see the impact of while our students are with us, but are still definitely worth that effort. For me, that tree was the garden. I started it not because it was easy or even something that gave me popularity amongst my peers. I started it because I knew it could have an impact even greater than any standard I taught within the four walls of my classroom. That first year was hard. I learned right alongside my kids. That water actually was important. And we better clearly mark off our plot, or yes, the district mowers will run over all of our onions and strawberry plants. The next year, we were able to hire Destiny, our Food Corps service member, and we just keep on growing. Three years into this, we now have all 630 students at Harp Elementary actively involved in our outdoor classroom. We have received almost $60,000 in grants and have forged relationships with countless businesses, nonprofits, school neighbors, and were even recently written about in the USA Today. We know school gardens aren't the easiest thing, and they require lots of work. But as we now sit back and watch our students not only make healthy choices, but also influence the decisions of their families, we know the countless hours of blood, sweat, and tears made it all worth it. As the Arkansas School Garden of the Year, we thank you for your support. We would also like to extend our deepest thanks to our administrators, Ms. Strange and Mr. Bowlen, and Mr. Jacob Sherwood, who was there with us that first year. Your support, guidance, and encouragement has meant more than you'll ever know. Thank you.
And this is Destiny.
Do you want to speak for a minute? Give us your perspective.
I think Ms. Erickson said everything, but I would like to thank Mary Miller for helping to bring me here to the district.
I can believe that. So what is the finest product that's come out of the garden?
Oh, gosh. I think that first year was just stuff. We didn't, we had no clue what we were doing. So we've now raised, I think, 33 different crops, and we have blackberries and raspberries and all sorts of things. Yes, apples and peach trees.
Amazing.
A big thing is engagement from kids in science that may not have something to hang on to before this opportunity for those kids to get out there and connect to that learning . That's been one of the greatest things to come out of the garden.
All the kids get to participate in cooking classes as well, and that's really fun.
What is the most interesting dish that's been prepared for you by the students?
We had a quesadilla cooked off, and that got pretty interesting.
I guess so.
Some kids were cooking without, like, the burner turned on, and that was also interesting.
Sounds like something I'd cook here.
Well, we need just a small report about efforts to get rezoning changes in the city so that we can have animals as a part of the project.
I left that out of the speech.
Talk to us about that. That's fun.
I am fortunate enough to work at a school whose leaders are all about the policy of ask for forgiveness, not permission. And so we currently own 11 chickens illegally. Sorry. But we are working closely with Jim Reed and a few other members of the City Council to possibly get schools rezoned as educational places so that schools can have chickens and other animals for educational purposes.
Well, that was a lot of it hard for that pair of goats, but I guess I came up with...
We're going to fight our battle slowly. We're choosing, we're choosing our side. Right now, we choose chickens.
Well, I'm very proud of y'all.
Thank you.
Well, that's great. Let us know if we can be your advocates and help you on that, too.
Well, we'll let you know when our date comes, and you can come sit with us.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Dr. Brown?
Board, we're on Item C in the first section of the agenda.
Good evening. Ms. Luttrell, board members, Dr. Rollins. At this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Michael Shepherd, principal at Lakeside, who will talk about one of Springdale's superstars, Mr. Winfield Watson. So at this time, I present Dr. Michael Shepherd.
Thanks, Dr. Brown. We don't have any illegal chickens, but we do have a bunch of cows around Lakeside. They're not actually on our campus, but we got to claim them as pseudo-mascots for us at Lakeside. I get to introduce to you a person who needs no introduction. He is kind of an institution in Springdale now. Mr. Winfield Watson, who was recently named as the 2014 Arkansas Social Studies Teacher of the Year by the Arkansas Council for Social Studies. Mr. Watson has been on the Board of Directors for ACSS for this year. We, of course, claim him as a Lakeside Golden Eagle. I would be remiss if I did not give a little bit of credit for his 16 years that he spent at Central Junior High School and did phenomenal work there at Central and continues to do phenomenal work for us in the area of social studies at Lakeside. And so I give my congratulations to the 2014 Arkansas Social Studies Teacher of the Year, Mr. Winfield Watson.
Thank you. Illegal chickens and institution, all in the same two minutes. I never thought I'd hear it. I don't know if I should be happy about the illegal chickens because of lying eggs or be mad because he just called me old. So, but all I can say is thank you. I appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you to Dr. Shepherd for allowing me to work with him and for him. Every time I see him, I tell him, have I told you lately how much I love my job? And I do. I love my job. I always have. For the past 18 years, Dr. Rollins, I've loved working here. For the past 30 some odd years, I've loved living here in Springdale since I started in 5th grade back at John Tyson Elementary and going through Southwest and being an 85 graduate of Springville High School. I don't plan on going anywhere else until they put me in the ground. So I guess I will be an institution if that's what it is, but I love being here and thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to come up here and tell you how great I love being here. So thank you very much. It's all I know what to say. Thank you.
Well, just curious. Okay, so second year at Lakeside now. History Day has, I think, been a passion of yours for a while, right?
Somewhat, yes, sir.
Okay. So how's that going? New school, starting it from scratch? How's it going?
Well, last year, we took one to nationals, which we were, we took three to state, which we were thrilled with. We were trying to get it off the ground, and our one lone to nationals was actually one that we brought with us from Central. She transferred out there, Ms. Love, and she placed 20, 15 to 21 in the nation as a 9th grader. She was 3rd in her room, and we were one spot away from going to finals with her. So we are tickled to death. So now, our year two, we're wanting to expand that. We're in leadership and legacy, and we're hitting the ground running. And with all of our Chromebooks, we are now totally gone digital with all of our paperwork and paperless stuff. So we'll see how it's going. But we're knee-deep in it right now, and that's all I can say, not to give anything else away.
Yeah, okay.
But it's going great. Thank you for asking.
You bet. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Well, congratulations, Lloyd guy. Much deserved recognition.
Thank you, sir.
I want to bring to you some more recognitions. I'd like to ask Mr. Todd Lofton and Ms. Debbie Flor if they've come up here for this piece. The Office of Educational Policy releases several different lists of high-achieving schools, and at this time of the year, they release a list, and it's called the Best Overall School, or I'm sorry, the High Achieving Overall School. And it looks at schools from all regions across the state, and it looks at all grade levels. And so this report is just kind of a picture of the overall portion of the school. Young Elementary received this award as a High Achieving Overall School for English Language Arts and Mathematics across the school. And Helstromville School received this award for Mathematics overall at Helstrom. So we're very delighted to have this recognition for these two schools, and give them a second if they have anything to say, or if you'd like to ask me any questions.
Come on up, Ms. Flor.
Well, it's nice to be with you all tonight. We're really proud of this recognition. It's been a goal that we've had to earn the, just the achievement that our children have to earn at that high level of high achievement. And so we were really, really proud when overall we were number 7 in Literacy and number 16 in Math, and we met our achievement goals last year for Benchmark. Our 5th grade really, really worked hard to pay attention to details, really get to know the children, where they were, how they were achieving, and began a system of pre and post-testing so they could really monitor their own instruction as well. And I think that contributed to recognition of 5th grade being number 10 in Math and number 8 in Literacy when there was a breakdown among grade levels. Of course, we always compare ourselves to our neighbors, and so in the region in Northwest Arkansas, Young Elementary was number 3 overall in Literacy. And we're really proud of that because we feel competitive in the region, and we want to do well. You might think that the teachers would rest on their laurels and think, okay, we've achieved and we've done well. Ha, good job, and they're finished. They aren't. They are accepting the challenge of new assessments that will come through this spring. They understand the baseline scores will be different, and we don't know what that will look like yet, but it's caused them to really focus their instruction and their goals toward rigor, and I think that's what's gotten us the achievement that the teachers and students earned this past year. It's just the focus on rigor and the relationships that they have with the children, really understanding the learning needs of the children. So it's our pleasure to let you know about the recognition tonight.
Congratulations.
Good evening. I was thinking, as everyone was talking, we have a garden and we have geese. So I guess that's our animal right now. We try to remove those as much as we can. I know Mr. Hoover would appreciate that. You know, it's always nice to be recognized for the hard work that people do. Our teachers, I think it's a product of the work that the teachers have done and the great kids that we have, the great parents that we have. I asked a couple of teachers to come because they played a role in that and continue to play a role in us growing and improving and, most importantly, impacting our kids and helping them to achieve and move forward in their education. So Tammy Guthrie is our instructional facilitator, and she is, she currently works with Thinking Mathematically.
Yes, Dr. Kent.
Yes, Dr. Kent, and is a leader in the state in that. So she's brought a lot to our school. She joined us from Rogers last year, was in Springdale prior to that for many years. And then also Tammy Collins just joined us last, this year. She also came and helped us with some instructional work in the spring. And so I'm going to let them say a few words, too.
I just have a few words. I would keep an eye on the list next year because we're going to be even higher. I think we were 14th this year. Not the first in the region, but next year we will be, and we're shooting for that number one spot on this list that the U of A puts up, correct?
Yeah.
So keep an eye. Watch out.
That's great.
I'll just, I'll just say that, you know, I had a great opportunity to get to work at Helstrom as an interventionist in the spring, and we were able to really zone in on what specific students' needs were in personalized learning, and we saw a lot of success in bringing their scores up from basic and below basic to proficient and advanced. And now I'm honored to be able to be a math teacher full-time at Helstrom. So, thank you.
Good. Are there, are there things that have been learned at your schools, Clay, that we will take to other buildings, just to help build on, just what she said, you know, in terms of some of those interventions, I guess?
Yes, we do, we do have times to, for principals and instructional facilitators to share successful practices with each other.
Because I know there's many great ideas out there, so it's certainly, I know it's great when you see results from that. Sometimes even in my own office, I'll do things and they don't produce results, but when you do see them, you certainly want to, well, I would just say, when you go back to your schools, just convey to the teachers how proud and excited and happy we are for them, and that is from the bottom of our hearts. I mean, that's a great achievement and great recognition for the two of you and your school
I have another recognition. Mr. Hoover and Ms. Childress, if you'll come up here. These two schools were recognized as being in the top 10% of schools. They received an award called Imagination. It is, the award is analyzed and presented by the company that provides us with Imagine Learning. And so they look at all the schools in the nation that use this software, and they pick the top 10% of their schools that have the best implementation. The kids use it for the number of hours that they're supposed to, and the teachers have received the type of professional development that they're supposed to. And it's really about adhering to the model that that company says works the best. And so George Junior High School and Monitor Elementary received this recognition as being one of the Imagination top 10% schools, and we're obviously very, very proud of that.
Well, like Mr. Hendricks said, when we, when we invest in a resource, when we take the funds that we have and invest in a resource, we feel like we should do it with fidelity. Also, the programs are set up to be successful in a certain way, and this program, in order to be successful, students have to be on it five days a week, at least 30 minutes a day. And so that's what we wanted to do. We wanted to honor the resources that we were using and also to do the program with fidelity so the students could get the most out of it. We know that the more you do something, the better you get at it. We tell our students all the time, the more you read, the better readers you're going to get. The same is the case for Imagine Learning. Imagine Learning helps with language acquisition, and so the more time you spend on Imagine Learning, the better you're going to be able to speak, read, and write English. And so we want our students on Imagine Learning as much as we possibly can to give them the time and the opportunity to catch up with their English-speaking students.
time and the opportunity to catch up with their English-speaking peers. Um, we also, um, appreciate the flexibility and the out-of-box thinking that we get from, um, the people that support us in Springdale Schools. This year, we wanted to be able to offer it to more students and not take time out of the classroom because Imagine Learning doesn't replace what they get from the classroom teacher. And the Transportation Department, um, Tracy Day was so wonderful to work with us that we have a bus that picks up in one, um, area of, um, high language minority students and gets them to school earlier so that they can do Imagine Learning from seven fifteen to seven forty-five every day. And we were also able to arrange for one of our buses to run a later route, um, a different, um, area that has a lot of language minority students and so they don't pick their students up until three forty-five. And so those students are able to get on Imagine Learning after school. And so that's a hundred twelve students that are able to do it thirty minutes a day, five days a week, without missing a minute of instruction. And so, um, we, um, I don't, I didn't even know about this award from Imagine Learning and, um, just very honored to know that they recognize that we are, are really working to do it right and make a difference with our kids.
There's not much to add to what Mary Bullock said, other than we do agree that we didn't have much, uh, knowledge of this award. Um, but at the junior high level, we have at George, our new arrivals, students who come to our school who are brand-new to the country and trying to catch them up to their peers when they're brand-new and have little language acquisition. It's programs like this that really help support the teacher and it helps support the students to get to closer to grade level as quickly as possible. So, the results we had last year were pretty phenomenal with the kids that used this. It was not as many kids as Mary Bullock mentioned at Monitor, but at George, it was specific for kids of serious need who were taking that first leap into our school system. So, it's good to have supplemental services like this to provide to our teachers and we're thankful to have those opportunities. So, thank you.
With some of the Race to the Top money and, and more electronic devices being available to your students, are you able to use a tool like this more now than in the past or is it different or is it really the same this year as what you did last year, from your perspective?
Well, I think last year we were using, uh, laptops we had. This year we're in the Chromebooks. iPads came into place. So, we're using all those different technology pieces to enhance the learning and especially these, these learners that are coming with language acquisition. It gives them the opportunity to see it and to visualize it and to have hands-on access and it's exciting for them. They've never had these chances, so I think they're great opportunities coming from the grants. And the things we've already been doing now, the enhancement of the grants. So, absolutely.
Anything you would add to that or from an elementary perspective?
No, I agree and Imagine Learning, um, constantly has updates. They didn't originally have an app for Chromebook, but it has come out this month. And so all of our classrooms that are one-to-one with Chromebook, um, they can access it not only during the Imagine Learning time, but if there are times in the classroom that it's appropriate for them to have that extra support, that extra practice. Now, all of our classroom teachers are able to access it as well and before we had the Chromebooks, they can only access it in our labs.
Any other questions or comments? I don't know if you-
Is this something that's done strictly at school or can they access it when they're at home and practice off premises?
They can access it at home as well if they have, um, if they have the technology at home.
Well, way to go. Congratulations. Another two of you.
I did want to make another comment about Imagine Learning. Uh, we, we were not aware that this award existed or, or how you would go about getting it. This is just the, the result of the, of the work of these, these leaders, but Imagine Learning has appealed to us at the district and we're still working through different trials of it to find where, where it's the most effective or where it's effective across the district. Imagine Learning is the only, um, language acquisition program that, that I have found that, uh, has a section designed specifically for students that speak Marshallees. So, one of the things about these programs is in some way, they speak to their, the children in their own language to help them build that language and, and learn more English. And Imagine Learning does that with Marshallees and so that's a huge, that's huge for us here in the Springdale School District.
How many of our schools have that program?
About five have it right now and they are the schools that have the most, uh, the highest percentage of Marshallees students.
Good question. Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Board, it's, it's been a, uh, goal of our district for years and years to make economic literacy a centerpiece of our curriculum. And this, this wonderful lady has kept this vision alive for many, many, many years and we continue to grow it and build it. I, I'd like to welcome Joe Van Der Spick, our Coordinator of Economic Ed, to come forward and recognize some great teachers who are helping make that a reality. Thank you, Joe, for all you do.
The Bessie B. Moore Awards Program recognizes teachers in the state of Arkansas for going above and beyond in curriculum writing. And these teachers that are recognized at the state level get lots of recognition because their curriculum lives on. I know Springdale teachers, uh, from observing them in their classes and seeing what they write, they are truly curriculum-strong. They know standards, they understand common core, and better yet, they understand everyday economic education and teach that to their children. These teachers from Springdale who won were three out of the twelve listed on the handout that you have, um, in the board agenda. And then the one I gave you shows the continuation of stellar teachers and writers of curriculum in Springdale since, uh, two thousand and three. These teachers will be recognized at a gala luncheon on Thursday, November thirteenth, in Little Rock at the Bill Clinton Presidential Library. They receive a thousand-dollar cash award for their entries and they get to meet some of the business and entrepreneur leaders in the state of Arkansas who are donors and who are present that day, along with, uh, Dr. Rollins, who always attends. The three from Springdale are Pam Connor is a veteran. She is from Elmdale. She retired at the end of the year, so she's not here tonight, but these units were written for the last school year. So, they actually taught them last year, then they're recognized in the fall. Does that make sense? So Pam Connor did the Super Bowl Economic Playbook. I think I saw Michelle Hunt, her principal, is here tonight earlier. And then the second veteran was Lisa Taylor. She's from Shaw. Her principal is Cynthia Voss. Cynthia, um, Voss has several teachers involved in economic education at her school. And Lisa, uh, taught the Economics of Arkansas, the Land of Opportunity. She couldn't be here tonight because she is teaching a class at the university, so she apologized about not being able to be present. Then this sweet lady standing next to me is a newcomer. This is the first time she's written up a unit, the first time that she's won, and I know she'll win again because she's very strong, Jennifer Wiggins. And, um, she wrote Economic Emporium and she's gonna be one of our three representatives. So, I've asked her just to briefly share about your unit, okay?
Try not to sing it to the world until overture because it's, it was a year-long project, but in a nutshell, um, the project I submitted to Bessie B. Moore was the Economics of Inventive Thinking. Um, it gave my students the opportunity to discover the free enterprise system, the characteristics of money, and entrepreneurship. So, I really wanted to provide with them, uh, to them and a real-life experience, something we could replicate that they could take with them into their, into their future. So, we decide that, decided that, um, we were gonna create a town where they could really utilize their economic education. So, the first thing I had them do was explore Arkansas entrepreneurs and, and to see how entrepreneurship in Arkansas changed our economy and the impact entrepreneurs have. So, it was really a great experience for them. So, they started to research them and then they came up with a product. They became entrepreneurs. Um, they also, so they created their own business, they created their own currency, they created their own financial institution. So, we pulled in those social studies, um, con, content area, you, other concepts from other content areas. So, it was really neat that they could learn the characteristics of money and then also put it into a savings ca, savings account, a digital savings account, withdraw it to purchase products. It was really fun. Um, the students had to apply for patents for their products that they developed. We did a little shark tank. We had to try to sell our products to invent, to investors and, um, we also had to do some mass production so they could use, learn the factors of production and things like that. So, it was a year-long, a year-long project. It was really good. Um, the students discovered that inventive thinking wasn't limited to invention itself, but also in the ways that they make choices and solve problems and take risks. So, it was a great project and I'm very thankful to have the opportunity.
Was it, was it just the students in your class that participated?
It was all of, all of our fifth-grade students and then we gave our fourth-grade students the opportunity to come purchase products. We have a school-wide curricu, uh, currency that all the students have, you know, as incentives for good behavior, so they were able to utilize some of their, um, currency to purchase products from my students, so it was pretty fun.
So, what caused you to decide to submit this for recognition? Was it your principal? Was it other teachers that you taught with? Was it just?
I think Economics Arkansas really encouraged me. I applied for a grant through Economics Arkansas to fund my project, so, um, they kind of encouraged me to apply for a Bessie B. Moore Award.
Gotcha.
It was fun. Thank you.
See, I think one of the challenges that we as an administrative team began to address as we opened the school year was this entrepreneurial spirit, teaching kids how to be entrepreneurs. Would you think about, uh, working with our principals on your project as an example and maybe you could help us all begin to think more about how to do this in, across each of our, uh, schools?
Oh, I would love that. I would love that. I have it all written out, typed up, and I'd love to visit. I think it was a great experience for our students and I'd love to share everything I have.
That's beautiful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, let's, let's talk right away, okay?
Congratulations. Way to go. There is a, I will add, there's an Economics Arkansas Luncheon at, on the twenty-seventh of this month that will be in Rogers where Mike Heckbilly will be the speaker and it's, it is a fundraiser-type event, but it's easy to support when you see how much money comes back to Springdale. I mean, when you look at this list, so, those in the audience that want to support that.
And we're taking fourteen or so students to that event, aren't we not?
Yes, no, come out today. Just, just about an hour ago, we have another table of ten. We have additional donations.
Great.
For families, yes. Take that from Rogers?
Yes.
What's that?
Just taking kids to that event.
To that event, that you're talking about.
Yeah, that'll be great.
Some of our vendors would like to tender and serve you.
That'd be great. It'll be, it'll be a special, special, uh, luncheon, that's for sure. Okay, Ms. Biller. We continue to grow our trails and get higher. All those good coordinated health initiatives, right?
Thank you and good evening, Board. Thank you for having me. I love to watch you all be so supportive and kind to all the students and teachers and high achievers that I have to follow.
They make it easy.
Um, I just returned from the American School Health Association Conference in Portland and one of the things that was stressed over and over again was the symbiotic relationship between health and academic achievement. And truly, there is a, a very strong relationship and we know that, um, but what we don't know is which one is really affecting the other or if they just go together naturally. We can't say that really health causes you to have better academic achievement or academic achievement has, causes you to have better health, but I appreciate all the things that you've encouraged and allowed and, and Dr. Compton, my boss, has encouraged and allowed it, us to pursue in this district. And one of the best things that we've done, I think, is the Joint Use Agreement projects. And I'm just gonna give you a little handout, if you don't mind, Mrs. McFetrich just passing these down to show, uh, all of the Joint Use Agreement grants that we've gotten over the past three years. Um, our total amount of funding has been four hundred and one thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and I believe we're probably at least double, if not triple, any other school district in the state. We're doing very well because our, our teachers and principals and physical education teachers are such go-getters. Um, just recently, in this last round of grant funding, Westwood received thirty-thousand-dollar, um, JUA grant for playground renovation. That was written by Jamie Lothian and, and Dr. Nandra Campbell. And, uh, they had already received a grant previously for a trail, so now they're going to be able to have a real, great playground improvement. JB Hunt received a thirty-thousand-dollar grant for playground renovation and that was Stacy Donovan, are you still here? Written by Stacy Donovan, the wonderful go-getter PE teacher at, at JB Hunt. And then, um, the Archer Learning Center, uh, received a thirty-thousand-dollar grant for fitness equipment, outdoor fitness equipment. I wrote their grant and it's a unique one in that this is our first Joint Use Agreement grant that will not be, our equipment will not be on school, um, grounds, but we're going to have the equipment on the Luther George Park, um, grounds right next to the trail and close to the restroom. So, our students can use it for physical, physical education classes and, um, before and after school and then the community is encouraged also to use it as they run and bike the trails or whatever. So, it's, it's a great new concept and our city has been a great partner with us. Um, the city has been our partner with, on every single grant except for the recent grant we got at Sonora Elementary School for a trail and, um, since Sonora is outside of the city limits, um, Mayor Spross didn't feel comfortable, um, partnering with us on that grant and, um, County Judge Marilyn Edwards stepped up to the plate and agreed to install that trail for us and it's beautiful and I hope you get a chance to see it. So, yes.
Do most of our schools have trails now?
Well, I'd say we have about twenty. And then there are a few, um, twenty Joint Use Agreement trails and Harp already had a trail and, um, JB Hunt already had a trail and-
I know, right?
Yeah, yes, and Young, that's right, already had. So, yes, most of our schools-
That's great.
-do have trails and, um, now we're having to be creative about things to apply for.
I'm sure you'll come up with something.
We'll keep trying.
Mary, talk a little bit about the sidewalks at Westwood and, and Elmdale. I don't know if everybody knows about that. I know you've worked really hard on that grant as well.
We have, we, um, Dr. Compton and I serve on a committee with, um, the mayor and the Director of Parks and Recreation and Public Works, Patsy Christie, um, I can't remember exactly what her title is. And we've had some of the folks from Elmdale and Westwood, um, on that committee with us for the last year and we've worked really hard, um, to write grants that were called Safe Rights to School Grants. They utilize federal funding from the Highway and Transportation Department and so this has become, uh, we found that this is a very slow process. We were approved for a Safe Rights to School at Westwood and Elmdale over a year ago to put flashing beacons and some sidewalks around the schools so that we could encourage walking and biking to school and that our kiddos would get to school, uh, safely. So, I think that was about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars and, and the city, I think, is going to kick in some extra because we've already got the sidewalk, we'll have the, the, um, process in motion and they're going to help maybe extend the sidewalks a little more than what the grant money would pay for. So, they are great partners to us. They really have helped us a lot with that. Thank you, Mrs. McFetrich. Anything else?
Mary, that's great leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Really wonderful.
Appreciate it.
Mrs. Donovan, thank you for your work on that grant and make sure Nandra knows we thanked her. I know you're here for the accolades, but make sure Nandra gets thanked for all that.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Good job. I'm just giving you a hard time.
We're on item I on the agenda. I'd like to ask, uh, I'm sorry, item H on the agenda. I'd like to ask Dr. Jones to come forward and give us a budget update on Race to the Top grants.
On page forty-three of your agenda, electronically anyway, uh, there are four items, just for your information and, um, review, having to do with Race to the Top. I'm very proud of the work that's going forward in all aspects of Race to the Top. The information that I've given you tonight is primarily for you to read on your own and I've given you reports from our teachers on special assignment, our, um, parent involvement and our technology tosis, because it's hard sometimes to capture Dr. Rollins in a memo all of the detail of work that's going along in each of the twelve projects. So, I try to give, I, I'm going to provide to you each month at least an in-depth look at some of the work plans that are support, that are sent to me monthly so you can see exactly what I'm seeing in terms of their reports. We did have an approved budget and if you will look to page one twenty-five in your agenda, you can see the approved budget. There were quite a bit of adjustments that were to be made, not because of a lack of planning- planning, but because of the timing of the grant. So there were no real concerns about the fact that there were adjustments with lack of expenditures that were then pushed forward. We're basically spending the same amount in year two that we had planned to spend with the idea that if there are residual funds at the end of the grant, we can push those funds into a year five expenditure. So we're staying with our original budget. You'll see, if you look on page 127 for example, there are some end notes that clarify exactly how the budgets were adjusted or changed so that we can keep track of where money was or wasn't spent at the end of the four years. They, this is kind of a backwards compliment, Dr. Rollins, but one of our USDA liaison said, you know what, every time Adam Bookman, who's our main liaison USDA, goes to a Yes Department of Ed meeting, he's talking about how great Springdale, how great Springdale is. She says, I think they're getting worn out with how great Springdale is. And I said, that's a great compliment. I love, I love to give that. So today, I just simply want you to know, we do have an approved budget. The budget is moving forward properly in the expenditures, and we are anticipating that there will be a few funds to go into year five. We pushed forward the budget for the purchase, I mean, the renovation of a center, and that would be available this year should that come about. So we, I'll entertain any questions you have. Otherwise, anytime you have a question, feel free to call, but we are tracking our expenditures closely and tracking the work of our folks through their work plans.
And really, the department's been very good to make adjustments as we built the case to clarify and so forth. It's been a great experience today, hasn't it?
And they could exemplify that, Dr. Rollins. Thank you for bringing that up. We signed a contract that became a contracted service instead of a staff development service, and that changed the line items on a budget in Project Seven, and they were fine with that. He said, that makes sense to me, and I'm glad you did that. There'll be other shifts in the way we're managing the grant. There's a lot of technical work that I'm trying to keep out of everybody else's hair, and I'll bring that forward over time. But tonight, I really wanted you to know of the work plans, the nature of those, and the budget line item and the adjustments, if you had any questions on that.
Marsha, these are, you know, really helpful, going through them and really giving a kind of an in-depth understanding of really what you're doing and what's going on in the grants. I really appreciate it very much.
Well, good. Well, I'm glad to provide any information that you know to want, or I'll try to anticipate what you might want. Each month, we meet, we have a conference call with our USDA liaison, including today. And again, had a chance, Kathy Morland shared the great work in the PLP process. Marshall Lehrer shared the White House visit. They were very interested in that, of course. And we shared our literacy tosa work. That lets him hear from voices other than just mine, the depth of the work and the passion behind the work. And their comment was, wow, all your projects seem to be moving along so nicely. How are you doing that? And I said, we've just got great people that are targeted and focused on what they're doing.
Are you, as part of this process, I guess, weren't there five different school districts or consortiums of districts that got this last Race to the Top? So are there times where on your monthly conference call, are you listening to what others are saying, and they're listening to what we're saying?
We're a member of a consortium, along with the first cohort of 25 schools, and it's called Communities 360, and we have forums, that we have webinars. They'll send out a question, for example. The last question was, does anybody have a system to help kids fill out FASA? Well, that's good information, because we are obligated to do that. So they're generating ideas on how to get kids connected to the FASA application process. So yes, we are in contact with them.
And then you also referenced maybe an adjustment in our budget or timeline as far as a center. Were you talking about the pre-K centers?
Yes. I just wanted you to know that that was still available.
I got you. Okay, well, that's good. Other questions from Dr. Jones? Are you going to stay for the entire meeting?
The answer is, I didn't hear that.
I'm teasing.
I bet Mr. Jones is waiting for dinner.
Yeah, that's right, probably so.
But I hate to burden you with my presence.
Okay. We are so thankful that you're leading this process, don't we?
We really are.
I mean, it is great to have you doing this.
I'm trying to keep the bureaucracy out of everybody's hair. That's my goal.
That's a big job right there, we know. So thank you.
Mr. Luttrell, item I on the agenda is the announcement of two important meetings. I believe the board has those on their calendar already. If not, the regional meeting is October 20th, and then you see the state meeting December 10th through the 12th. And we'll work together, as always, to travel to those meetings and so forth. So if y'all would let me know your schedule, I would sure appreciate it.
And I do believe, Board, we need to take official action. If you choose to appoint me as the school district's delegate at that assembly, I think we do actually need to have a motion and a second.
Do we have another choice?
You could certainly step up and do that.
No.
I make that motion. My second.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. McFetrich, a second from Ms. Cook. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so I will serve as their delegate. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Witanski, if you would make your way down to the microphone.
Are there any miscellaneous informational items?
I'll wait on that.
We're just checking the seat.
I am, but I was trying to follow the agenda.
All right, well, good afternoon, good evening. I hope everybody has had a good week. We have sunshine, so that's always nice. We had a trip that was to New Hampshire last week as part of the Race to the Top work. The Dr. Jones, she's going to stay for this part, I believe, and then exit with us.
Did she shatter into it maybe?
Yeah, exactly. I know, that was pretty hateful. Yes, yes, absolutely. So part of the Race to the Top grant challenges us to think in innovative ways. It challenges us to think of ways that we can do things maybe in a different way. And one of those ways is looking at competencies. And so our charge was to leave and attend a trip. We had four administrators that went with us, and so I'm going to ask them if they'll stand. They're all here. We had Mr. Rollins, who went with the School of Innovation. We had Dr. Freeman, who went with us from the Alternative Education Environment. And then Dr. Danny Brackett, who's also here, and they're happy to answer any follow-up questions that you may have. But I will tell you, 17 flight delays and three cancellations later, we did make it to New Hampshire, which was exciting. Dr. Freeman had a much easier traveling process than we did. However, we did make it. Our goal, as I said, was to look at this competency work. And so they might be able to provide you some more information from the view of the principalship. However, on our end, our goal was to go and find what these competencies look like. And I'm happy to report, we got a lot of good information. We had a lot of good feedback. And more importantly, you can see the structure that's happening, and that's one thing to see good teaching, that is, that's always reflective in a school that is high-functioning. And the good news is, we see that a lot in Springdale. What we don't see a lot is how does that work, and how did the principal manage to get that type of competency awareness happening in the school? So I think it was really beneficial for all three administrators to be able to talk face-to-face with someone who has already traveled down this road, and then to be able to see those things being implemented in the classroom. It's good to read about, it's great for us to study research on, but it's a very different experience to go live and in person and see it happen. And so we were able to see that. We visited a new Gloucester in New Hampshire. We visited a charter school in Manchester, New Hampshire. And then we also went over, we visited Maine, and then we also went to Parker New Chapel, which is a charter school that we visited. And of the, each school had its own enlightenment, had its own piece that it provided us. But particularly, the piece that we saw with Parker, we were able to see a lot of the same like-minded practices that we are trying to strive for here in Springdale. So it was definitely a positive experience. And I don't know if you want to hear from these fine young men as far as
I think it would be nice to have them come down
Absolutely, so.
and share and make it worth our while.
I guess we should say, young men.
Come on, girls.
What did I say?
Dr. Daniel Correct Brackett, we'll start with him, and let you tell us, let him tell you his.
Are y'all kind of dressed alike, don't you? I know.
You didn't get the memo, did you?
I know, I lost it.
Dr. Witanski did an outstanding job of explaining kind of the processes that we looked at. We were looking at several aspects, but the competency-based instruction and learning, standards-based is another way we talk about that, assessing that. And then some other aspects of what we were looking at had to do with the Race to the Top Grant, i.e. the advisory program. I was sharing with Dr. Brown this morning that there were some things that really became more clear in this conversation, because you can read, you can even talk to these people because Parker, their administration, some teachers and students were at the National Associated Secondary School Principals Conference in Dallas. And I think all of us got to see them and talk with them, but to go into their school, observe it taking place, really, there was some eye-opening conversations there. And then to work with the, our CSSR?
That was good.
Now, just don't ask me what it means. Dr. Joe DiMartino and his team, to work closely with them, to break bread with them, to sit and talk with them. It's an opportunity you don't get very often, and we had extensive opportunities to do that. So I also got to know these guys a lot better, which was a really little plus for me, because I don't get out much.
We talked about experience being a great teacher. We talked about that with our kids. We talked about theory versus hands-on experience. That was the difference. And if it wasn't enough to see the schools in action, I'll go ahead and say it again, Parker was a great place to visit. That was the high point of our trip. It gave us a chance to sit down and talk with finished product students who had been through this program for four or five years. Seniors who were getting ready to graduate now with all of the credits, all of the advisory experience articulate, they could tell you about the competencies, exactly what they were addressing in the projects, what they were going to do for their senior capstone experience, how that related to them in terms of going to college, going to work. The only thing that they needed was an interpreter to understand me, so I understand what our kids who moved here feel like. Outstanding experience. They were great, and they were hospitable to us. That was the experience that we needed to see to try and put together some of the pieces that we're talking through right now, especially at the School of Innovation.
Well, I had the privilege of making it to Maine quicker than these guys, so I got a chance to visit more schools than what they were able to see. The competency was new to me, but I saw how it could benefit my environment. I don't say more so than the other schools, but there's some things I can put into action right now. Because we have kids from a variety of backgrounds and ability level, I think it really can benefit me, because, for instance, if to complete English 12, there are seven competencies. I have kids there from a variety of abilities, from the AP students to the lower achieving students. With the competencies there, they're going to be the same for all the students. Some of the, say, AP students we might have, they may be able to go through those competencies a lot faster than some of the other students. Why allow that student to stay in that class that entire semester trying to complete those competencies, where they could have completed it a lot sooner than that, and they could have moved on to the next course? So I see that as being reality, and I think it's something that definitely can benefit our students a lot faster. Also, we deal with issues at Archer, attendance issues, because our kids have, whether it's medical issues or some other things that's going on within their lives. Say they missed two weeks of school. If they missed two weeks of school, that competency where they stopped off is still there when they come back to complete that during that time. So I definitely see it as something that we can definitely benefit from Archer, really.
That's great. Sounds like a good trip. Thanks for sharing.
It was great.
Any other questions for the triplets, as they've decided to dress alike?
What, I'm just kind of curious. I noticed you did go visit a charter school. Did you notice what were the differences of a charter school, and I guess that was Massachusetts, not New Hampshire, versus what we are seeing in Arkansas?
I think charter school, it's a different, you're dealing with a different set of rules than we have here in Arkansas. Arkansas has kind of three versions of charter schools happening. So we have our conversion charter, where a typical traditional public school seeks an application to convert one of its schools. You have the charter process, which can be a nonprofit person who comes forth and says, I'd like to begin a school. And then you also have a full conversion charter, which means the entire district goes to a charter model. And that's a little different in every state, depending on what that looks like. Also, it is different in that we have in Arkansas a much tighter rein, speaking from the Department of Education stance, on what is permissible and what is not permissible to happen in schools. The flexibility that they deal with just from being a public school versus what we deal with from being a public school is very different. So some of the things for us that would seem like, wow, you can do that, it's just part of state law for them that they are allowed to do that. So that, I think, is always, I think from having a state perspective, that's something that I'm probably more mindful of. I think that's probably a different, like, oh, wow, you know, experience for them, having lived and worked in the local district level. But I think that's one of the biggest differences that we have. But also, in terms of charter, as they are deciding what that is, some of that process is still very similar to them. They have a cap on how many charters are allowed, they have some of those same similarities. So it's still good, though, to pick and grow from those different programs that you see, and then determine, okay, what's going to work for our population that we serve here, and what's going to be the best fit for us here? So I think it's lessons to be learned from all the sites that we visited.
Great. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. So the other thing that we're going to discuss is the annual report to the public, which you have a small packet here for your review. And of course, visioning is always part of Dr. Rollins' mantra, for us to make sure that we are getting better at getting better. And you will notice on the front of this kind of a continuum that takes you from that essence of where we start for our pillars in safety, moving toward personalized instruction that, of course, will help us in the areas of academics and eventually achievement. Some things that I'd like to point out on page two for you are our graduation rate, which is excellent. We also have students who are engaged with interim assessments through the NWEA MAP assessments that we are conducting through the district. For you, for this year, for your information, we're serving, 67.8% of our students are free and reduced lunch students. And that K-12 percentage, we have a 93.2% happening each day on average for K-12 for students attending school, which is very high, and shows you the desire that we have for students who want to be here, and also the support we have for parents to get them here. Our dropout rate is something that also should be highlighted. That's 1.9%, which is very low. So the consistency to stay and see your degree through is there. College remediation rate for high schools is currently 18%. We've got 1,231 students participating in ACT and/or the SAT, taking that assessment, which is always positive. Our three-year trend data is listed there. I've also listed a link there just for you to be able to be mindful to go and click on and look at individual schools. As far as schools, you know, we have 30 that are across the board and across the gamut, so you can click there, that will take you to a link, and I also can provide that to you electronically, so you can do that without having to retype that. On page three, achievement is something that we always look forward to celebrating, and one of those areas are the top 10%. We have three schools that were recognized by the Arkansas Department of Education in their school recognition program. That's Bernice Young Elementary, Hunt Elementary, and John Tyson Elementary. And of course, you are familiar with our national merit semifinalists, those students who were selected. We have seven from the Springdale School District. And also a recap of the White House initiative, that we were selected by the United States Department of Education to come here for a visit, which is certainly an honor. That showcased Dr. Rollins and his hard work, and the Commissioner Wood came and visited us from the Arkansas Department of Education. One thing that you should know on page four is the accreditation status. We are currently approved with our accreditation status and have no sites. And that sentence probably does not mean as much to you as it does to us, but that's a pretty big deal, to not have sites in that area. We are about to go through the accreditation process. We have the onsite Standards Review Committee that will be here on campus, October 29th through the 31st. And so they will be visiting with you, probably, and they will be visiting with us intensively, and we'll go through that process again. That onsite review happens in a cycle of every five years, so that's just good for you to know. And I know that Dr. Rollins has a memo prepared that he's going to be sending out to you. I think he was trying to get past the meeting tonight, so that you could put that on the next set of dates. next set of dates that you've got. Of course, personalized instruction garnered by our Race to the Top district grant, which is always a central focus for us, starting off with the School of Innovation, but more importantly, how do we do that for every student in every school and every classroom here in Springdale? Safety, again, being the pillar of us making sure that we are doing and taking every measure possible, from communicable diseases to, you take it. We want to make sure that our students are safe here. Staffing, one thing that you should know is average compensation there for teachers. But interestingly, in that second paragraph, that shares with you the per pupil expenditure, that's down from last year. This year, it is 8,869 per student. Our goal is to always take local tax dollars and to move those local tax dollars into achievement, and to make sure that we are achieving at the highest level possible. And in an effort to do that, we've gone green. And so, handbooks were provided electronically. However, if parents were interested in receiving a hard copy, they had to make that request. We've provided them with a hard copy also. And/or grandparents, and/or whoever would like a copy, they're welcome to have one. But it's also available online, so that they can see those updates happening. The policies that Dr. Cleveland will be bringing to you later this evening, those things will be live updates. And so, that's helpful for us to have something that is a current working version versus something that is a year in behind. And last but not least, on page five, our big audacious goals. I know you're familiar with those, but it's always a cornerstone and a focus for us to make sure that we are, we have those tenets, and we're striving to meet with those, what those are asking of us. So, hopefully, this gives you a brief overview, and we'll get this to you electronically also. And I appreciate your time.
You know, something that Dr. Rollins and I talked about in advance of our meeting is, and you touched on a little bit under the staffing part, of the per pupil expenditure of 8,869. You know, it might be interesting for our perspective, you don't need to know this tonight. How does that compare with other districts, or with the state average, or something like that? Just might be helpful to know.
Absolutely.
Certainly, I think that we're as efficient as anybody, also don't want us to be cheap either. I mean, we certainly want to provide an enriching experience.
I think that you would say efficient, maybe, instead of cheap.
Exactly.
I think we're very efficient.
I do, too.
And I will tell you that that per pupil expenditure has gone down. However, I can get you that state average really quickly and get that back to you. That's not a problem. Yeah. That's good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Luttrell, I apologize to the board. We've been on a pretty fast pace the last few weeks. There's really an important business item that we need to do. The first meeting following the school board elections in September, we need to reelect our officers for this year. We normally start our agenda that way, and I got caught up in the teacher recognition and just, I didn't get that done. But if I might ask the board to consider your slate of officers for this year and take action on that, I would appreciate it.
I'd be happy to, Dr. Rollins. I would like to put President Mike Luttrell, Vice President Jeff Williams, and Secretary Randy Hutchinson forward in the form of a nomination.
I have a motion from Ms. McFetridge. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There's none, so motion carries. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Board. We didn't get that done earlier. Thank you very much. Okay. Dr. Cleveland, if you'd come forward, I think we have a number of recommendations we want to make, unless the board wants to take a break for just a moment.
You don't want to take a break, or you want to keep going? I'm trying with either.
Okay.
Well, we just take a couple of minutes, and, yes, let's just take a couple of minutes, and we'll be back in about 10 minutes, or less, faster.
We'll see.
Well, he never answered my question just now.
Look out, a little wrong center.
Let's do it.
He was going to get Dr. Compton, and then he'll be right back in.
Good luck on that. If Dr. Compton snoozes, he loses.
Okay. We'll get started back up.
I'm taking a work opportunity to address you tonight. You've been aware for quite a while that we're having our standards and assurance review this month. I'd like to thank the Personnel Policies Committee for helping me go through the student policies, along with Dr. Rollins, to give me some appropriate guidance as to what the district's done in the past and what we need to do in the future. Many of our student policies were identified as needing amendment in order to meet the expectations of our standards review this October. The first of the policies that were reviewed and recommended to be amended is IKAB, it's Student Progress Reports to Parents. There was a statement there. I provided you in your blanket there, or your booklet, if you will, the old policy or the current policy, and the proposed or amended policy in red, and provided it to the press as well. Anyway, you can see that there is an extra, some extra verbiage there that talks about teachers required to communicate, et cetera, et cetera. That is part of the standards review monitoring. It's verbiage that needs to be there, and we didn't have that, and it is relatively new. Mr. Luttrell, you have a puzzled look.
I'm just, I'm looking at my agenda, as well as what you've handed out. I've got them matched up here.
I provided you an update tonight. I provided you a update tonight of what the policies would look like if they're approved and they have hole punches. The others I provided for you, I killed another tree or two, I guess, for you to make sure. We had some typos when I hurriedly gave it to Cynthia to get it to you. And going back through, Dr. Brown, I found a couple of things that we needed to amend in pretty simple typos. So, we did that and I provided you the clean copies tonight. Okay? IGAA, Smart Core Curriculum, this is required by the Department of Ed and from what I understand from Dr. Potocki since she used to run learning services at the Department of Ed, there are specific requirements we have to address and they've changed over time. Dr. Rollins knows about this and we visited about it in length in the past, but we've had to update that verbiage. So, what we did with the PPC is we went through the Arkansas School Board Association model policies. Those model policies have been vetted at the School Board Association with their attorneys and what we did is we copied with approval, because we purchased that right to do that, the recommended policy for Smart Core, okay, up through, I believe it's 17 and then 18 and beyond. That policy is also mirrored in IKF and IKF is the high school graduation requirements. And so, there were some specific areas that we needed to break out for our review. The area in question, and I'm paraphrasing, we had to break out that Springdale requires two additional credits over the Smart Core of 22. And so, I think in one area I broke that out for you in blue and mainly I did that so when the Department of Ed comes in for our review, there's no question whether it's embedded or not, it blanketly says that, that Springdale requires two additional credits for graduation. Okay.
On page one of IGAA. Drop down to the third paragraph and it says, "The policy, Smart Core Curriculum and the courses necessary for graduation shall be reviewed by staff, students, and parents at least every other year." I would like to see us say, "We're going to do it every year."
Well, no, we certainly can.
I mean, I think it's so important and we don't have our students that long and you'd think about if we go every other year, that may not be enough.
Sure.
And it does say, I know it says "at least" every other year, but I'd sure like to see us review it every year.
If the board would like to do that, Dr. Rollins, I have no issue with amending that, you just have to let me know if that's what you want to do.
Where are you at again?
Well, it's on page one of Policy Code IGAA.
The one that's stapled, Michelle, if you go on to four pages.
Smart Core Curriculum. It's the third paragraph.
Let me just ask a question real quick. Part of the reason for updating these is in advance of evaluation. Would it be appropriate for us to go ahead and approve this as printed right now that we've had in our agenda, then to come back next month and then update it again or, I don't want to steal your thunder, I mean, in terms of making that change, because I think it does make sense, and then come in, I don't want to, you know, have to redo a policy every month, but that's just a thought. I don't know that that's the way to do it or not, I just.
And I likely could. There may be some things that the Department of Ed requires us to amend next month anyway. Because we, I believe, is it 60 days, Dr. Rollins, to make those amendments? So, we would have 60 days to make those amendments and policy if necessary. So, we can certainly do it at that time as well if there are any things that we need to change.
I think that's certainly a good suggestion and one that we should consider, I mean, and maybe not adjusting it tonight again unless.
Now, why wouldn't we want to do it?
Well, my only thought.
Because this is already printed.
Because we've got it printed and it's.
It's printed. I would need to go back to the PPC and we're going to have a scheduled meeting and just talk to them about the amendment, which is no big deal. I'm sure that they wouldn't have any issue with doing it every year as opposed to every other year.
This language again came from where now?
Arkansas School Board Association, their model policies.
And I think.
Would it be okay with you if we researched it a little bit? There may be thinking there that is not obvious to us just as we read it. Let's at least review it with the ASBA attorney and see what their thinking is. Is that all right?
That'd be great.
Let's not forget that either, I think that's. I didn't think you would.
We won't let him.
I've made a nice comment. I've made a nice comment. In fact, I've underlined it. Okay. Okay. IIAC is Library Media Center Material Selection. There were some changes there. The changes were not, because someone had an issue with the policy, the changes simply mirrored what the ASBA recommended. And so, as we go through this, these policies in total, from student to personnel to classified and all the way through, I think eventually it would be nice to have our policies truly aligned with the School Board Association policies. We do pay for that service and we, even though we like our structure, having those policies vetted through the attorneys of the School Board Association, I think is very wise. So, if we're able to amend our policies to not necessarily mirror, but use them as the skeleton to make sure we don't miss anything, I think that's a wise move. So, over a period of time, and it will take time, we're a large district and we have many policies that are required and necessary. So, over that period of time, I think it would really be good. And thank you to Dr. Rollins for allowing me to reach out and I think it's $900 that we purchased the right to review those model policies. Anyway, we simply made the changes to Library Media Center Material Selection to mirror what has been approved by the ASBA. Likewise with Grading Systems, which is IKA, IKF, High School Graduation Requirements, again, mirror the Smart Core Curriculum and Common Core Curriculum. The new policy that was necessary for us, we didn't have anything addressed, dealt with the admission or extracurricular activity eligibility for homeschool students. I know Dr. Rollins has read this and approved this, it's required for us to have this policy to address the new law that, they called it the Tebow Law back in the last session. This is the recommended School Board Association policy for the extracurricular activity eligibility for homeschool students and it's a combined policy of JLIGDJB. And finally, Dr. Rollins laughed when I brought this to his attention, but it's JFCS, the Possession of Pagers or Similar Electronic Communication Devices. I don't know if pagers are used anymore, but we do use communication devices in a manner like cell phones for educational purposes. So, we, Personnel Policy Committee and I agreed that it would be an excellent idea just to remove the policy and Dr. Rollins agreed and so that would be a recommendation to the board as well. So, those are, I went through them quickly. I know you've read them. If you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to take those. Otherwise, I would request to Dr. Rollins and the board to consider approving these policies as presented.
And so, if I understand correctly, it looks like amended policies, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine policies to be amended. There is one new policy and there's one to be deleted.
Well, I think there's eight amendments, one new policy and one amendment. What you have, I think the city has there is that JLIGDJB. I'm going to do it twice, is that correct? Do you have the?
Well, I'm looking at page 171 of the agenda and it does say JL slash IG DJB on one line together. Oh, I, you know, it's interesting, look at this real quick because I think it's listed, if you look at it, as far as recommended for amendment, it's right there. It's recommended as a new policy right there. So, technically, are there eight amendments? Okay, all right. Board, if you look at page 171, under Policies Recommended for Amendment, it does list JL slash IG DJB as being amended and really that is the one just below that shows it's a recommended new policy. So, there's eight for amendment, one new policy, and one for deletion.
That's true. And that's not Cynthia's fault, that's my fault.
And I guess just to go back and ask the question, I mean, you've already said it is, these are things that help, that make sure that we're in compliance with different state regs, been vetted by the State School Board Association, obviously been with the PPC and been discussed at the teacher level and everybody's in approval and agreement on this is the changes we need to make.
I will make a motion.
Make a motion.
To accept the amendments, the addition and the deletion of the policies presented here tonight.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Cook. Any other questions or discussion before we vote? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes and nuns, the motion carries. Well, thanks for all your work on this and Ms. Spence, thank you for all the teacher work on all this too. Takes a while, I know.
They did great work. I did want to follow up with you quickly. Last week, or last month, it feels like last week, we had a request about our transfers, balance transfers and I provided you some information, simply if you'd like to review it, about our school district balance transfers dated October 14, 2014. I need to tell you, we have kindergarten balance transfers, there are 42 of those currently, but the amount of students got to the point, we needed to add a class at Jones in kindergarten. So, that number will go down by 15 and give us just a little cushion at Jones. We, as I mentioned last month, we've really grown this year, especially in those lower levels and that's why Dr. Rollins has talked to you about adding another elementary school quickly in the next two years. So, we need to be able to relieve those space issues, but that will reduce the number of kindergartens that are balance transferred to 30. First grade has 26, second grade 28, third grade has 34, fourth grade 11, fifth grade 26, and on the second page, sixth grade has nine and seventh grade four balance transfers. Dr. Compton and his team at the Transportation Department has done an excellent job in trying to get these kids to school on time and away from school on time so they get as least amount of instruction as possible. And we've even gone further to try to reduce it and honestly, there's a little bit of expense to the district, it's just the way it is, but the importance of that instruction time is so critical. And so, Dr. Rollins has instructed me to make sure that students receive as much instruction time as possible, at least to meet the standard. So, that's what we're trying to do and thank you to Dr. Compton and his team at Transportation for helping with that. As far as employment, we have 177 new hires as far as certified to the district. That is not new positions, those are new people to the district, as you know. 86 new hires that are classified new to the district, 12 new classified positions that we've had to add for, for example, in kindergarten, you're able to add some aides to go up over the standard of 20 students in a classroom up to 22. And so, we've tried to do that in order to reduce the number of students we balance transfer on school buses and we've kept that really minimal. Some of the issues we have in balance transfer, and I know I'm going back, is sometimes there will be a family of one, two, or three kids and one class will be full, okay? And so, we need a balance transfer of one of the students. So, the family would say, "Hey, I want all my kids to stay together. There's room at the neighboring school for all three, can they all just go?" Does that make sense? And so, that's part of what inflates our balance transfer numbers some, but it's minimal, but it does happen. Anyway, we've added some of those classified new positions, obviously for growth. The total number of certified personnel we have right now is 1,589 people. Those include full and part-time FTEs. We have right now 1,043 total classified personnel. You have any questions in regard to that report? And I've provided that information for you if you'd like. Our October 1, our official count, I got from Mr. Hayes, thank you, Mr. Hayes. Officially, we submitted on October 1 to the state 21,120 students. That is K-12. We have another 980 in pre-K for a total of 22,100. All time high, right, Dr. Rollins?
What was the total number? Pre-K?
980. So, that would give us 22,100. All right. I'm sorry to take so much of your time tonight. Thank you so much for the consideration of the policies and for listening to me.
Thank you, appreciate your efforts in putting it all together.
I'm Mr. Luttrell and members of the board, Dr. Rollins. The monthly report from Support Services tonight is just a kind of a number of different items that I hope you find interesting and very good for the district. I'm glad Derek is here tonight. Derek Hudson oversees all of the SROs, Jeff Taylor reports to him. Lieutenant Hudson is a great ally of the district and Dr. Rollins and I met last week on Friday with Chief O'Kelly through the COPS program. We're about to get seven more SROs in the district and that's really a big deal. That, under Dr. Rollins' leadership, that will now enable us to cover our high schools, our junior highs, our middle schools, and seven of the select elementary schools. So, we're going to work on that. We looked at that program, the officers I expect to be hired sometime late spring or summer for their training and then they'll be here starting in the fall and we're real excited about that. That is a three-year program. The grant covers all those costs and in the fourth year, the City of Springdale will pick up the cost for that. So, in terms of our district progress, those seven officers come to us kind of cost-free for the next four years. That's really a great deal for us and because that's really needed coverage. So, we're real excited about that. Kathy O'Kelly and the department are great to work with. Dr. Rollins was real excited about that news and the meeting on Friday was nothing but healthy and positive. You saw Kathy Laundre here tonight. We've got our flu clinics that are going on and you have the schedule, by the way, that is attached there for those of you that are looking to get a flu shot. Last year, we had, we immunized about 11,000 people, students in our district. We're really anxious and hopeful that we can increase that number. So, you can see that schedule there.
Carrie, I worked the Hut Elementary one this last week.
Did you?
And it was the first, I've worked middle, junior high and high school, I've never worked in Elementary one.
It's quite a thrill, isn't it?
And they did a phenomenal job. It was probably the best run. I didn't have a single crier, I didn't have, I mean, it was incredible, they did a great job. And it was, I mean, they, we were so far ahead of schedule that we were having to make teachers get, you know, redo their own schedules because we were, they were so far ahead. So, it was a great, a great job.
If you want to see the criers, you'll have to come see Dr. Rollins and I when we get our shots. That's generally when the tears break out, so, but you're very kind.
They did a great job.
I appreciate that, thanks. If you, on the construction front, just a couple of new things that are out there. The Elmdale School-Based Health Clinic has started, the footings are dug and poured, which we're real excited about that. The media center has been blocked off in the back. Baldwin Shell will do that job. Smith Elementary Media Center is getting ready to start as well, that'll be fenced off very quickly. As you know, we opened our new stadium out at Harbor and by the way, that was a great thrill for me to see all of you out on the field and I know you got a football and all of that. It was a nice night, a little bit warm. I felt sorry for Dr. Rollins, he had to kind of amble out there with his bad, bad foot and dressed in a sport coat and I know it was hot and toasty, but I have to tell you, Jared and I were up together and it was a great thrill for us to see you all out there at the center of the field. It was really pretty cool and I just want to say thank you for your support. It wouldn't have happened without the Board of Education and it wouldn't have happened without Dr. Rollins trying to push that forward for a long, long time. So, it was just a great night for me. As you know, those of you who have been in and around, the stadium is certainly not fully complete yet, we're working on that. The North Building, we're hopeful by the next home game, that changing center for boys and girls, that'll be done. We've got a few issues in the press box, the bleachers, ticket booth, some storage, landscaping, we're kind of all over all of that, I wanted you to know that. We are ready to start the Springdale Stadium as soon as their season ends. We met with the City Council Planning Commission last Tuesday night and the Springdale plans are all approved. I was there with Chris Brackett of MacGoodwin, Williams, and Yates and the city gave us the go-ahead, so we're really good with that. In the end of this, I think the board and the community are going to have two beautiful stadiums. It'll be just wonderful for us when we get that done. So, I'm really proud of your work and everything that we've done there. I put in a word about the balance transfers, the credit for that really doesn't go to our department. Dr. Cleveland has done just a great job of identifying needs, schools, staffing, and making sure that we minimize. staffing, and making sure that we minimize any lost time for our kids, we worked very hard on that, and he really deserves all the credit in the world for that. I've met with the Washington County Hazard Mitigation Team focusing on area-wide crises that might hit our area, we're putting together a plan and a grant. If we do, we're the key player in that with 22,000 students, and they're very concerned about anything that might impact, everything from tornadoes to floods to any damages that may occur, they've been very helpful, and we've given them everything they need, so hopefully we'll be a recipient of a grant, and I'll let you know more about that as that comes forward. We had a visit from the State Department, Roy Blackman came, and we get millions of dollars to build our schools, so they come and check us out when it's all done, they want to make sure that we spent our millions in the right place and did exactly what Mr. C. and our construction team at Baldwin Shell said we were going to do, and we did. We're expecting a letter any day now from the Division about Lakeside Junior High, which is our newest school. Roy was very impressed with everything that we did, it's a beautiful school. The last thing I mention to you is, as you know, last month, we said goodbye to Jim Reed and Junior Copeland, it's probably impossible to replace 70 years of experience, but I have to tell you, the two people that we brought on board, Jeremy White, who you may know, wonderful young man, he will be the maintenance supervisor, he oversees everything. Working with him will be David Mountain, David has a long career, has helped build a number of schools in this district, both of those guys are on the job and doing great work already. Jeremy oversees everything, David Mountain oversees all of our new construction, so any questions or issues, just direct them our way and we'll take care of it. They're two great additions to the district, so that you know that, so. Mike, that's all I had. Any questions this evening? Thank you very much, thank you, thanks, Mike.
Appreciate it.
Mike?
Board, you've received a copy of this letter within the last week, but I think it's important that we read it into the public record, or at least address it as a part of our planning process. Dr. Compton and I have worked very hard along with Kelly to really look at the financial package. In a district that's growing 600-plus students a year, you're constantly planning, constantly trying to stay ahead of that growth. And what I'm talking to you about in this letter, really are things that we've talked about many times, but it's important that we start a planning process to address the next phase of school construction. And Gary's just talked, or certainly within the last meeting or so, we've talked about the bid packages for the Smith Media Center and Classroom Edition, the Elmdale Media Center and Classroom Editions. You know, we finished Health Centers at George Elementary, and we have Elmdale, that bid process has been approved. So, there are so many things going on out there, Gary just addressed the stadium, but again, we have to keep classrooms in front of our growing population. We have to have a site for our school of innovation. The Jones Center's been wonderful to provide space for us this year, we're hopeful that we have an agreement there where we can serve kids next year. So you can see the timeframe that I'm looking at is being driven on a lot of fronts. Even in Dr. Jones's conversation this evening, we addressed the pre-K. Michelle's question, how many pre-K kids do we have this year? 980, and we'll add to that, I expect, next year, and next year, and next year. We have so many of our pre-K classrooms satelliteed out into the buildings, well over 30 classrooms that are satelliteed out into existing elementary. So, again, Mike, I don't want to take too much time this evening, but I do want to make some real important points, because when you stop and think about it, we're here in October of 14, and we're talking about opening schools in '16, that is an extremely ambitious schedule, and I would be the first to say, it may not be realistic, but it is a starting point for us to plan and budget, and work with our architects and engineers, et cetera, to look at the feasibility of that. So, on October 8, I wrote this letter to you, and it talks about bringing the new elementary school on in '16. In prior meetings, Gary's explained that this is a project that will qualify for state partnership funding. The problem is, we don't know at this point in time exactly how much, do we?
We don't.
We know what we believe it will require to construct the school, but we won't know until the legislature acts and actually generates funds to bring reality into this. So, if Mr. Owen B. were here, Mike, I'd really want to make this point, and I'm going to make, since he's not, I'm going to make it kindly with y'all. This is me sitting at my desk, with input from Dr. Compton and our staff, and certainly Kelly's played a tremendous role here, and trying to put together what I think is a realistic game plan based on our history, and then looking forward at inflationary costs, et cetera. But, in order to open a school, the elementary school in 2016, we have to sign a contract with our architects now, so that they can do the design work. Once we are clear on the amount of money that comes to us in partnership money, we can go to work building the building. Now, we've had quite a history of doing that, this is not a new approach. I've got all the confidence in the world in Mr. C. and his team, and so I'm trying to explain to you, we're going to need to enter into a contract with Wittenberg, Deloney, and Davidson to design our 2016 elementary school. Now, I wouldn't be at all surprised if the board is a little confused about the site that I've recommended. As you know, we've had two sites that we've been looking at evaluating, I like both those sites very much. There are a number of cost factors associated with the site on Tyson Avenue that I feared the city would expect us to take on, and they certainly have proven my fear to be right on target. And truthfully, when you look at the, having to purchase the property, and then look at the infrastructure development, I don't think at this point in time, we have the finances or even the time to deal with all the infrastructure to get our school ready for '16. So that becomes an easier decision. We come back to the property we're already on behind J.O. Kelly for the '16 school, and we can look at that property down the road if we choose to. In this letter, I talked to you about building a, bringing a new elementary school on in 2018, and it would be located on the approximately 25 acres of property we own behind J.O. Kelly. The infrastructure costs are not comparable, based on what we know today, with what we might see if we went to the secondary site. So, it's a pretty easy call for 2016, and I think our architect has clearly recommended, after a thorough analysis, Dr. Compton and staff here are in full agreement. The School of Innovation. Let me just paint a vision, and we can adjust it, it is a, if we choose to, it's a point of beginning. We own about 80 acres of property on the east side of Hilton Road, across, almost across, directly across from Lakeside Junior High School. I think it makes a lot of sense to look at building the School of Innovation there, with the understanding that clearly that can also not just be the School of Innovation, which we are planning to serve about 1,000 kids, but over time, built in phases, first phase being School of Innovation that we had opened in '16, about 150,000 square feet, that's consistent, I think, with the monies that we qualified for with partnership money from the state, but phase two of that school might add another 750 to 1,000 kids, making that truly our fourth traditional high school. Now, obviously, that's looking down the road five, six, 10 years before that second phase would come forward. First phase would be the School of Innovation, located on that site, and then there would be a complimentary phase two to complete that project, to bring that enrollment up to about, again, as much as 2,000 kids in the future. So, again, I'm looking at 2016. That is a very ambitious process, because you're, you don't have a prototype to work from like the elementary. You have to, you've got, you've got to look at planning program, planning conceptual models, you've got to look at space, you've got to know what the big picture looks like while you're plugging phase one into it, what will the whole project look like by the time you finish. So, you understand what I mean when I'm talking about an ambitious process. My architect hasn't told me we couldn't do it, he's just told me how challenging that would be, and there's nothing new about that, so that's where I'm looking, that's the direction that I hope to go. So, we look at the property we already own on Hilton Road, phase one, School of Innovation has served about 1,000 kids, phase two to follow, five to eight years later, we'd add another 1,000 kids there perhaps, and that would relieve, obviously, the growing population at Springdale High School. So, that'd be a part, that'd be partially answered to our high school program. The third piece, again, has been in front of the board for a long, long time, and that's the need for a pre-K center, and we've looked, we're looking at multiple sites. This letter talks about the Jones Elementary Campus, it's one of our larger elementary campuses, and working with the architects even today, a design model will fit on that campus. Now, we're, obviously, this is early into the process, but I think that'd be a great place for it, and it would have good access to parents who need that service, et cetera. You see the budget that I've laid out, you understand that the first two projects, the elementary school and School of Innovation, have already qualified for partnership money. The pre-K center will not qualify for partnership money, that will have to be dealt with, just like we've done other improvements, like at the stadiums, et cetera. And I've recommended to you that we pay for that, monies that we've put together over the years and put into our building fund. Again, all three of those schools, hopefully, standing here today on the 14th of October of 2014, I think it's doable, we'll just have to see if that's realistic. And if we need to make adjustments, Mike, we'll come back and talk with you more. And certainly, if y'all have questions or thoughts about how to take this forward, or if you're looking at a different perspective, I would welcome your input.
And I would just echo that to, to other board members, is to take an opportunity to visit with Dr. Rollins. When you sit in this chair, I have lots of opportunities to do that, and so you guys, please, and ladies, reach out to him with your thoughts or concerns along the way, I mean, because it's certainly significant and ambitious, when you think about $45 million worth of investment to open up in 2016, and the financing that comes with that, whether it be your own building fund, or whether it be second lien bonds, I think you've thought through it a lot, I know Kelly's probably helped you, I know Kelly's helped you a lot through that process too. When do you think, and you may have said this and I missed it, when do you think we would know the partnership money? When do we think, is that going to be after the session?
We will, the percentage of that and the amount of that, Mike, we are supposed to get on May 1st of 2015.
Okay.
So, we need to be ready at that time to go.
Okay, so.
That's what we're trying to do, is use this interim to do our design work, and really be ready to launch. And frankly, that's what we've done for the last several schools we've built, it's just, it's worked really well to do it that way.
Okay, so we're going to do all the behind-the-scenes work and not put a shovel in the ground till after that date, and those guys will work quickly and diligently.
And we should understand, let me make sure I read this into the record, we've been sent some pretty strong messages from the state, that the partnership funding piece is in flux, it's in question. If the formula for assisting districts with construction changes significantly, we'll have to rethink this, because I need to tell you, the most anxious person in the room is right now is Mr. Hayes, I can assure you. This is, this is a challenging financial plan, but honestly, it's probably the best financial approach that we could take, because when you look at inflation, inflation, inflation every year, it really is difficult to wait if you genuinely perceive the need is real, and we certainly do believe that, so. As you, as you can see, our annual debt service would rise from a little over 10 million now to about 12 million, so our monthly house payment will be about a million dollars a month, as we bring this plan forward.
Well, that, the other thing, a couple of things, oh, two other things, and then please other folks speak up, you know, you have, over the years of developing, your land bank has served you well, and as you've done that, it enables you to do these three projects, really, without any new additions.
That's exactly.
Your land bank is low, and, you know, there's still opportunities probably for, you know, some acquisitions at some point, as you're looking around the area.
Well, I really appreciate you saying that. It has served this growing district extremely well, but we've, we've about cashed it in, we've about used up all the land that we have, especially on the east. And we still have some excellent parcels that, in place on the west, but when you, when you look at building on the Hilton Road side, and building behind Kelly, all we have left on the east is the 24 acres on Dodd Avenue, Dodd Road, Kelly. So, we need to be looking at that as revenue will allow us to.
Yes, sir.
How many pre-K kids would you anticipate the Jones Center addition?
We're looking at 36 classrooms, so.
So, does that take every?
It'll be a, it'll be a big school, 700-plus.
Does that take everything, all the satellite schools out?
Today, it would, Randy, we have 35 sections of pre-K that are out in the buildings.
Okay.
So, if we build a 36th center, that, that would cover where we sit today, but I think Dr. Rollins makes it very clear, we're going to be adding more pre-Ks as we can over the years.
But that, that move alone saves the district 15 to 18 million dollars in terms of a required second elementary in '18. So, you can see the fiscal responsibility of making those moves, if we can bring it all together. And, you know, if '16 turns out not to be realistic, then somehow we've got to figure out how to get the School of Innovation a home until '17 then. So, we're just trying to work with the game plan that we have to, we think we've got a space for this year and next year, so that means '16, we need a home for the School of Innovation. Are you with me? Am I making sense?
Hardly anything.
Well, spend some time with Dr. Rollins if you, if you have questions, because it's, I've learned a lot, and I know, I know we all can. All right.
Thank you.
Let's see here, what's next?
The most anxious guy in the room?
Board, I have three items for you this evening. The first item is the monthly building projects update. As Dr. Rollins and Dr. Compton have already mentioned, we have began construction on the, or accepted guaranteed max on the TJ Smith Media Center and the Elmdale Media Center, so they have been added to the spreadsheet, along with the Harbor Stadium that has been on there for quite some time. So, be happy to answer any questions you may have on that. If there are none, the second item that I have for you is, in the, in the last legislative session, an act was passed, Act 1120, and Act 1120 requires the school board to review and approve a listing of all employees that received in excess of a 5% increase in total salary between, and this particular spreadsheet that you have before you compares the 1213 fiscal year with the 1314 fiscal year. So, both of these years are in the books, and we have to have this approved by this meeting. As you noted, we, we put explanations for the employees listed there, mainly, it's stuff like, somebody was hired late in the first year, and when you compared that salary to the next year, it was, you know, it was a higher percentage. A lot of our substitutes are listed on there, because one year they didn't sub as much as they did the second year, so they're listed on there. You know, we have employees who are out for leave in one year, well, obviously, we don't pay them if they're on unpaid leave, and so when you compare the two years, it the two years, it, it threw out there. Other examples are, our employees, our certified employees can go back to school and get additional hours in the way our salary schedule works. If they move over, they will move over on the salary schedule if they earn a higher degree such as a master's or a specialist, and we have a number of employees that do that each year. So all of those reasons combined help create the list that we're, that is in front of you.
You said this is a new law that was just passed.
Yes.
What, what was the basis for doing this? Was there a problem somewhere, or, I mean, what, I mean, the state, from the state level, why did we all of a sudden have to start?
I don't know the answer to that. I, I can just tell you that this is the law that was put out in front of us. We knew, we knew it was coming, and the auditors are looking for, to make sure that we are in compliance with this. I think ADE has to publish a list of any school district that is not in compliance, and so we're just meeting the law.
How many names are on your list?
There are 797, which sounds like a, a huge amount, but as you know, when you add in all of our subs and all of our temporary employees, along with our contracted workers, we're in the thousands. And so, you know, I noticed when I was compiling the list, I think I have one person that made like $30 in one year and 90 in the next, and so obviously, that put them at a 200% increase, so they're listed.
Other questions for Kelly on this? If not, I will accept a motion to accept this resolution.
So move?
Motion by Ms. McFetridge.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hutchinson. Any questions or discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There is none, so the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
The final item I have for you this evening is the monthly financial statement. And you can see, when you compare this month last year, our revenues are slightly ahead percentage-wise, and our expenses are slightly behind percentage-wise. Those are both good things. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I can motion to accept the financials as presented.
Motion by Mr. Hutchinson?
Second.
Second from Ms. Cook. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there opposed? There's none, so the motion carries. Well, I'll go back to, I know earlier tonight, we heard the word fidelity used, and I don't know if Megan used that or if there was somebody else, but, you know, Kelly, when I look at, at the work that you do, I mean, there's a, a lot to keep up with, with a $180 million budget, and I appreciate you managing it with fidelity. And as we talk about new locations, for being able to use existing, you know, land that, that the district has, I think you're doing a good job. And we talk about the, the cost to educate our kids. We are efficient steward, or you are efficient stewards of that, so thank you.
On behalf of everyone, thank you.
Are you looking for a raise?
No, I'm not. I just, I just know it's not easy to do. I'm an accountant, so.
I just can't imagine. Oh, you're right. I forgot. You are an accountant.
I can.
Well, good evening.
How are you?
Good.
We gained 12 new members since the last meeting, so we're at 43 for the year, so that's great news. Today, we had a regional event here in Springdale for bus drivers that are losing their healthcare insurance on January 1st, and we had people there to just talk to them about what their private options are going to be and show them how to sign up for those private options so that they know what all's out there. So that happened today. We are sending 11 people to the Arkansas Conference that's happening the first weekend in November, and we have two people running for state offices that will be elected at that conference while we're down there. And next week is Arkansas School Bus Safety Week, and so we are going to do something for the bus drivers next week also. Yes, have any questions?
Thanks for sharing. Appreciate it. Okay, well, there being no other business, our meeting is adjourned. Thanks for staying.